Okay, we'll start the Calhoun County Council meeting with the public hearings on eight, or seven ordinances. And John, you go read them.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
All right, ordinance twenty twenty dash four, an ordinance to provide for the appropriation of funds and the levy of taxes for the fiscal year twenty twenty through twenty twenty-one for the Operation Debt Service Building Fund, food service of the public schools of Calhoun County, Orangeburg County Technical College, and Calhoun County Disabilities and Special Needs Board, including the Elmarian Aggressive Center, to provide for deposit and dis- disper of funds, and to provide otherwise for the affairs of public education in Calhoun County.
Anybody got any questions? Okay, John, next one.
Number two, ordinance twenty twenty dash five, an ordinance to provide for the levy of taxes for capital improvements and debt service for Calhoun County for the fiscal year beginning July one, twenty twenty, and for the expenditure thereof and other funds, and to provide otherwise for the affairs of the county.
Does anybody have any questions on that? Okay, John.
Number three is ordinance twenty twenty dash six, an ordinance to provide for the fees for Calhoun, uh, for county purposes for Calhoun County to operate and maintain water and wastewater for the fiscal year beginning July one, twenty twenty, for the expenditures thereof and other funds, and to provide otherwise for the affairs of the county.
Does anybody have any questions about that one? Number three.
Number four, ordinance twenty twenty dash seven, an ordinance to provide for the fees for county purposes for Calhoun County to operate and maintain Calhoun Hills Golf Complex for the fiscal year beginning July one, twenty twenty, for the expenditures thereof and other funds, and to provide otherwise for the affairs of Calhoun Hills Golf Force Golf Complex.
Any questions on that? Okay.
Number five is an ordinance twenty twenty dash eight, an ordinance to provide for the levy of four point one-two mills taxes to operate and maintain the Sandy Run Fire District for the fiscal year beginning July one, twenty twenty, and to appropriate other funds for the expenditures thereof, and to provide otherwise for the affairs of Sandy Run Fire District.
Any questions on that? Okay, number six?
Number six is an ordinance twenty twenty dash nine, an ordinance to appropriate and authorize funds to operate and maintain the Calhoun County Rural Fire District for the fiscal year beginning July one, twenty twenty, for expenditures thereof, to provide three mills for debt service, and to provide otherwise for the affairs of Calhoun County Rural Fire District.
Any questions on that? Okay, number seven?
Number seven, ordinance twenty twenty dash ten, an ordinance to provide for the levy of taxes for county purposes for Calhoun County for the fiscal year beginning July one, twenty twenty, and for the expenditures thereof and other funds, and to provide otherwise for the affairs of the county.
Any questions on that? Okay, all right. Then we're going to a regular county council meeting of twenty-second June. I call the meeting to order. And Sir, would you add the invitation, please?
Yes. For your presence, we just give you thanks for this beautiful summer weather, Lord. You've blessed us with, just bless us to be faithful, to do your will, Lord, to be the best we can for this county to make those decisions that are best for the people of this county. We just give praise for all you're gonna do for the county in the days ahead, as we move into its new year, and we praise you for all these things in Christ's name. Amen.
How emotional we approve the meeting of June eighth, regular meeting?
So who?
Second. Any more discussion? All pay the motion, aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Uh, anybody have, any guy got any committee reports? Okay. Anybody, anybody got any appointments? I got, I got the hospital board appointment. Uh, I've got Dawn Robinson, and she's, uh, William Robinson's wife. They moved back here from Bertie County, and she was on the Trident?
Yes, sir.
Board or something?
Yes, sir.
And so she ought to make us a good one. But I have a motion to be approved, Dawn Robinson.
So moved.
Second. Any more discussion? All pay the motion, aye?
Aye.
Okay. Uh, the approval of nomination of Kristen Pratt to represent Calhoun County on the Lowest Man of Workforce Development Board. I have a motion to be approved, Kristen.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any more discussion? All pay the motion, aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Little resolutions are probably, all right, is Judge, Judge Bloom?
Chairman, if you don't mind, if you jump to number two, uh, and we'll come back, Judge Bloom.
Okay. All right, Steve Jergen, building the planning update.
Mr. Chairman, members of council, thank you for the opportunity to serve citizens of Calhoun County along with you. A little bit about me, I have a BA in education from University of South Carolina. Please don't hold that against me. Uh, I hold Master Code Professional Certificate from the ICC that writes the code, licensed by the state of South Carolina as a building official. Ex-president, vice president, members of board of South Carolina Plumbing and Mechanical Inspectors, board directors of the Upstate Co Association, board directors of the Building Officials Association of South Carolina. I helped write the electrical exam that the ICC gives to qualify candidates, and I was an instructor on the State National Fire Academy. Twenty-eight years in code enforcement, about ten years as a building official. Uh, I think I can bring some experience and some enthusiasm to the county, and I've seen a few things that occurred in my former county Lancaster that I think will be beneficial for the citizens of Calhoun County. Uh, this, we've had a busy time in our department. We've had a Department of Natural Resources visit on our floodplain program. They recommended that we update our ordinance. We'll be bringing that to you. The updated ordinance that they have apply to state and federal regulations. We have a business, a building department effectiveness grading visit coming that is going to assess the state of our department. ISO also sets fire insurance premiums for the county. The better we do, the lower the fire insurance premiums are. This is also in concert with the fire department. So we rate it there. We're updating the comprehensive plan. That happens about once every five years, and our zoning ordinance. So we've had a little busy time here since March. Uh, we're currently under doing a fee study on our permits. I feel that we are, uh, undercharging. We're having folks come in and building three hundred big thousand dollars houses in the state so they can do it for eighty-nine thousand dollars. And we're losing money on permits. We think we can make the department self-supporting and be fair to everybody. We have created more online access. We're using the computer now to have clients apply for permits, be able to pay for them, schedule their inspections, and get the results online. Uh, we're undertaking some training that's required for the planning commissioner, and we'll be telling you a little more about that. New product that we've got going on, Lake Wild, is once again alive. I know after a period of time here, but there is some new interest in it, some new investors, and we're going to move forward with those. Uh, we're recommending to the planning commissioner and council that you approve that. Uh, Lake Wild has already been approved in the past as a planned development district, and really, uh, they're changing a few things, but the general concept is going to stay the same. So we would ask for your approval on that. Uh, the subdivision formerly known as Blackwater, that joins Orangeburg County, that name has been changed to McCord's Ferry, and they're interested in getting that going again, and we would ask for your approval on that. We had a relatively minor subdivision, High Hills, that involved seven lots. Uh, very, very minor thing. We can do that administratively, but we want to make you aware of it. Uh, that's about it. Do you have any questions for me?
That, um, McCord's Ferry, what is it, like a hundred acres or so in Calhoun County?
Yes.
Okay.
The majority of it is in, in Orangeburg County.
Right.
But we did have a portion of it, and, and one thing I forgot to mention to you, with Lake Wild subdivision, in talking with the developer, I mentioned to him that it would be really wonderful thing if he donated a little land to Calhoun County. So they have agreed to donate, uh, I think, one to three acres to county to be used as county city spits, such as a fire station, a library, EMS station, something like that. And they would deem that property directly to us. Anybody else?
I'll be getting with you soon about all the stuff that I'm saying. We'll talk off a lot about that.
Yes, sir. Glad to look forward to it. Thank you, sir.
Steve?
Yes.
You don't have to apologize for being a Carolina writer. Uh, Clemson was a hundred years old, and the district guy, I forgot his name now, but he's passed away since. But he came in here for Clemson. They wanted to fly the flag out there for a couple days. And so we said, yeah, that'd be fine. And he kept on going. I told him, I said, look, you better get out of here while you ahead of the camp because four busts on this border of Carolina grass. And so he said, thank you, sir. Got out. And you don't have to apologize.
This gentleman, we were right at home. Thank you, sir.
That's not, that's not the case anymore.
Just so you, just so you understand where he's standing today.
There, no, there's not a majority of Carolina writers.
We've got two.
We, we work with everybody, sir.
All right, Steve, good talk. We are gonna need for you to, uh, please vote on those two, moving forward on both Lake Wild as well as McCord's Ferry.
You want a motion on that?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I move that, uh, we move forward with the approval of the changes and what is it, Steve?
Lake Wild.
At Lake Wild. Uh, and I'm, I'm gonna do it separately, if that's okay.
Okay, I have a second to that?
Second.
Any more discussion? All pay the motion, aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the, uh, moving forward with the, uh, changes to the McCord's Ferry property, uh, that the portion was in Calhoun County.
Okay, have a second to that?
Second.
Any more discussion? All pay the motion, aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay.
Mr. Chairman, members of council, we'll be coming back with a more formal, uh, presentation for you with some audiovisual things and some material for you to look at.
Okay, thank you, Steve.
Sir.
All right, uh.
Judge.
Judge?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Judge.
I always want to come to this with a two-hour PowerPoint presentation, but they, they tell me they don't have the extension cord to fit that. I just want to give you a quick update as a new quarterly, and I appreciate this time on the magistrate system. Uh, first, we've transferred a number of the Sandy Run cases because of the backlog with the St. Matthews office, and we're handling that. A big thank you to, to court Lauren Davis and her help in that regard. Um, second, I want to let you know during the quarantine period, St. Matthews office continued to operate, and we offered people with traffic tickets the opportunity, if they did not come to court and wouldn't come to our office, we'd cut their ticket and half price if they paid it right then and there. And we actually raised, and I know we're not the revenue collection business, but we're trying to help folks. We actually raised some record numbers of, of ticket payments that way, where people took advantage of that, uh, kind of fire sale, if you will, for, for a month or two. We're doing hearings via Zoom, um, so a lot of parties, um, will participate, and, and, uh, I want to thank Robert Trufdale, the tech person who's, who's helped us with that, and, uh, helped us establish a Zoom account so people aren't having to come to court to do that. We've assigned a record number of folks, Ryan Gibson, doing litter pickup. Just had one person complete thirty hours of community service, uh, doing, doing litter patrol, picking up the roads along the county. I want to remind you Judge Randolph out of Cameron has man, his mandatory retirement is June thirtieth. Magistrates, when we hit age seventy-two, we have to retire at the end of the fiscal year. So his last day will be June thirtieth. He is going to continue to serve the town of St. Matthews as their municipal judge, or is going to attempt to. He's, he's in discussions with them because the town doesn't have a mandatory retirement. The magistrate is a statewide, um, mandatory retirement. There, the legislature is in the process of approving a new magistrate for Cameron, but as you can imagine, with everything that's gone on, um, that's about number nine hundred ninety-nine on their priority of things to accomplish in Columbia. I am informed that probably by August or September, a new magistrate should be appointed to the Cameron Court. What I've done in the interim is I've had Chief Justice of the South Carolina Supreme Court appoint Lauren Davis, who's a clerk in my court, but she's also a part-time municipal judge in Eldery in Orangeburg. So since she's a part-time judge, she's qualified to do it. She knows the county. She knows the system. There won't be any learning curve. So she's gonna fill in, um, on bond court rotation on the weekends in, in that regard, and doing that. And we're trying to come up with a plan where we won't be able to staff the Cameron office after Judge Randolph retires once a week, but maybe twice a month we'll be able to go down there like the second, fourth Tuesday or whatever, where people come in, ask questions, and either Ms. Davis or I will rotate and, and handle that.
Judge, that's what I, I talked with, um, I believe with John Matthews and John Simpson leaving that.
Right.
But, um, I told him, I didn't think we needed a, a full-time magistrate down there anymore. You know, I, I still don't believe that because, you know, you full-time up here.
Right.
And then we have the one up in Sandy Run, and I think that pretty well covers the county then.
Well, we may not. That's something I can, I can discuss with, uh, Mr. McLaughlin. Um, you know, we're, we're allowed under the census to have that actually part-time magistrate, and it may be that part-time magistrate, i- if that office isn't gonna be used, fills in on weekend bond court, or if it wasn't, when I had a sick day or a doctor day or, or whatever. The same thing with Sandy Run, and that magistrate rotates. So I'm very open to discussing, discussing.
That'll be fine. I mean, but you know, I, you know, it's not, don't have the horse and bug anymore, so.
Right.
You know, not same eight miles, same Matthews.
Right.
Down there.
And that rarely is a council decision, how do you want, how do you want that done? So I'd be glad to explore that with Mr. McLaughlin. I'm very open.
Right. And I live down there, so, you know, and I'm, and I'm in favor of doing away with it, you know, but, um.
It, it has experienced a reduced caseload, um, over the last year or so. You know, a lot of folks just come to the St. Matthews office to, to file for whatever they have to file for, pay their tickets, and then so, so I'm glad to explore that with, with Mr. McLaughlin.
Yeah, I told him to go on that, and that, uh, kind of see that we, he can bring it to council and we can decide.
Yes, sir. I'd be glad to. Did we do that? And that was kind of the last thing I said. I, I want to tell you, I've really enjoyed working with Mr. McLaughlin for a short time he's been here. Uh, he's been very supportive of the magistrate system and, and, and willing to learn, and very helpful, and, you know, supportive to what we're trying to do in the city.
He's doing a great job. He, I tell you, everything is kind of, it's eased down now. It's, it's quieted down, and, you know, it's, he's really doing a good job.
Yes, sir. And lastly, I got my summer haircut, so we're all good. If you have questions, I'm glad to answer, but thank you for this opportunity.
Sure. Thank you, Judge. We appreciate what you're doing.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
The landfill closure, John, on the convenience sites and.
Yes, sir. Uh, we've got that, uh, we've got that chairman on there, just to give you, uh, an update. Uh, really don't have a whole lot of, of details there, but we've got a meeting set up for next week, first of next week, with Davidson Floyd, who are the engineers of record for both the landfill closure as well as the convenience site improvements. So Woody and I've got that meeting, uh, next week, and, uh, and I, we, Davidson Floyd's already gotten a draft pulled together as far as the closure plan of landfill. He's gonna go through that with us, and then we can go through that with you. Uh, and he's also got some ideas of how we can make improvements to the convenience sites since we will be, we can be closing down the landfill. Uh, I'll have all that in the next, uh, next report to you, that update. Uh, along with that, with Davidson Floyd, we'll also be meeting with, uh, Parker Poe, who is the attorney that came and presented on the tent and talked about looking for options of selling the permit. Uh, so I'll have that update, uh, along with the Davidson Floyd at the same time.
Okay. Anybody got a question? All right, uh, any other home business? Somebody got it? So the new business, uh, anybody have anything? Okay. I've got, uh, the reading of the ordinance is, uh, third reading on the ordinance. Uh, you want to read them again, or you, I'll tell you, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Something we do every year. We do it before. Continue to do it.
All right, sir. Number one, ordinance twenty twenty dash four, third reading, an ordinance to provide for the appropriation of funds and the levy of taxes for fiscal year twenty twenty-one for the Operation Debt Service, Debt Service Building Fund and Food Service of the Public Schools of Calhoun County, the Orangeburg Calhoun Technical College, and the Calhoun County Disabilities and Special Needs Board, including the Elmarian Aggressive Center, provide for deposit and disper, it's.
Third.
Big work, big work of funds, and to provide otherwise for the affairs of public education in Calhoun County.
Okay. Have a motion to be approved, third reading?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any more discussion? All pay the motion, aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay.
Number two, ordinance twenty twenty dash five, an ordinance to provide for the levy of taxes for capital improvements and the debt service for Calhoun County for the fiscal year beginning July one, twenty twenty, and for the expenditure thereof and other funds, and to provide otherwise for the affairs of the county.
Okay. We have a motion to be approved, third reading?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any more discussion? All pay the motion, aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay.
Number three is the ordinance twenty twenty dash six, an ordinance to provide for the fees of county purposes for the Calhoun County to operate and maintain water and wastewater for the fiscal year beginning July one, twenty twenty, for the expenditures thereof and other funds, and to provide otherwise for, for the affairs of the county.
Have a motion to be approved, third reading on that?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any more discussion? All pay the motion, aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay.
Number four is an ordinance twenty twenty dash seven, an ordinance to provide for the fees for county purposes for Calhoun County to operate and maintain Calhoun Hill Golf Complex for the fiscal year beginning July one, twenty twenty, for the expenditures thereof and other funds, and to provide otherwise for the affairs of Calhoun Hills Golf Complex.
Have a motion to be approved, third reading?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any more discussion? All pay the motion, aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay.
Number five is ordinance twenty twenty dash eight, an ordinance to provide for the levy of four point one-two mills taxes to operate and maintain the Sandy Run Fire District for the fiscal year beginning July one, twenty twenty, and to appropriate other funds for the expenditures thereof, and to provide otherwise for the affairs of the Sandy Run Fire District.
Have a motion to be approved, third reading?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any more discussion? All pay the motion, aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay.
Number six is the ordinance twenty twenty dash nine, an ordinance to appropriate and authorize funds to operate and maintain the Calhoun County Rural Fire District for the fiscal year beginning July one, twenty twenty, for the expenditures thereof, to provide three mills for debt service, and to provide otherwise for the affairs of Calhoun County Rural Fire District.
Have a motion to be approved, third reading?
So moved.
Second. Any more discussion? All pay the motion, aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. All right.
Ordinance twenty twenty dash ten, an ordinance to provide for the levy of taxes for Calhoun, uh, for county purposes for Calhoun County for the fiscal year beginning July one, twenty twenty, and for the expenditures thereof and other funds, and provide otherwise for the affairs of the county.
Have a motion to be approved, third reading?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any more discussion? All pay the motion, aye?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, the second reading on, uh, on this twenty twenty dash.
Yes, sir. Uh, an ordinance to amend, ordinance number ninety-five dash six, as amended by subsequent ordinance, uh, ordinances related to the joint county industrial park of Lexington and Calhoun Counties, as to embarge the park and other matters thereto related.
Okay. Have a motion to be approved, second reading?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any more discussion? All pay the motion, aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. All right. John, what you got on that?
All right, sir. Uh, as you'll see, I just have, uh, three reports here. Uh, I wanted to thank everyone in the county, uh, citizens, the employees, uh, as well as the volunteer fire district. Uh, within two days, the thirteenth and the fifteenth of June, we picked up right at three tons of litter, uh, from the sides of the state roads as well as our county roads. And so I'm real appreciative for that effort. Uh, we're gonna try to do this three times a year, uh, and, uh, position it a little better as far as the weather, uh, of course, but, uh, I do want to tell everybody thank you for that effort. Uh, also COVID-nineteen testing. So, uh, we had, we've had two protesting events. The first one was in Cameron, and that was right at, at two hundred, uh, individuals that drove through and got tested in Cameron. And then this past Wednesday, we had it here in St. Matthews, and it was right at three hundred and ten that drove through and got tested. So really appreciative, uh, for the town of St. Matthews helping us get the word out, uh, Cameron getting the word out, and all the staffs helping in getting the, the marketing and advertisement for that. Uh, certainly, that's a big turnout, uh, especially when you look at a county our size compared to like Annenberg County, we had a really good turnout.
John, we getting formal numbers that they, on the files versus note, I mean, the report might come out?
We, we have not, not specific to those testing, not yet, that's all. And then the last thing is the introduction of our new animal control director, Mr. Bobby Mangum. Uh, he's in the audience here. Bob, if you don't mind stepping up here and just kind of telling counsel what they're about yourself.
We just brought him on. Today's his first day, so be easy with him. Uh, he, he's a North, North Carolina boy, but, uh, we'll get him, we'll get him, uh, we'll get him pulled in to follow you.
I appreciate that.
Thank you for welcoming to Calhoun County, even though I'm a transplant from North Carolina, northern part of North Carolina. I'm only forty-five minutes.
You're a blue state.
Um, I've been doing animal control for over eighty years now. Um, what I'm trying to do for Calhoun County is implement some things from North Carolina. Try to push the shelter forward, uh, to where I see fit. Also hiring a new officer, and when I hire that new officer, I'm gonna provide training from the, for them, for the county of Calhoun to serve the county as I see. Um, when I started in animal control, my director at the time, he's an ex-military marine. He pretty much molded me the way I am now. Uh, prior to that, I was an auditor for charred communications, so, uh, I went to court, uh, for people who were still engaged in everything else. So, um, seasoned in the courtroom for, prior to coming in on services, uh, along with doing cases of cruelty and everything else. I wore three hats when I was there. I was an animal patrol officer, senior, and then I was cruelty investigator, and before I left, I was the shelter commander. So, uh, I have dealings with rescues and everybody else. Uh, I want to give everybody in public in Calhoun County, uh, basically if they're doing something, educate them first before I do anything. Uh, I'm more of a community outreach person. Um, I would like to go to the schools or something for career days, show them what we do, uh, be more involved with the community. Uh, and I just hope I can lead Calhoun County to any degree. Thank you, Father.
Can I, can I ask?
Yes, sir.
One question.
Yes, sir.
Have you had any experience with, with, uh, working with SPCA's and, uh, you know, having people separate from us, becoming the adoption? having people separate from us, becoming the adoption agencies, just out of curiosity? Or, or did y'all, did your own adoptions through y'all's?
We were government ran, so basically, we done the adoptions, and things need to be rescued, we call rescues, uh, we did work hand in hand with our, you know, Animal Protection Society of Person County, um, when they had problems, they came to us, and when we had problems of giving out animals, we, we went with them, so that's the way we, we worked, um, also Durham and Chapel Hill, they both, Chapel Hill and Durham are kind of like, the humane society runs the shelter, animal patrol has their side in the shelter.
Right.
So it can be, it can be accomplished, it's, um, it's just the funding and which way the money goes, that's the big thing right there.
Sounds good.
Yeah, we'll talk to you about that, Rob, we'll think about that, right? Good job, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Nice meeting you. Nice meeting y'all.
Okay, uh, anything else, John?
Yes, sir.
We got, uh, two items on the executive session, legal matter, personnel matter, do you have a motion, we go ahead, executive session?
Mr. Chairman, I move we go into the executive session to discuss a legal matter and a personnel matter.
You have a second?
Second.
Any more discussion? All pay the motion, aye?
Aye.
Judge, could I see you a minute before you?
You sure can, sir.